My apologies, we declare the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all. The evening is brought to our audience for a meeting and speaking. We have two local boards that are gendered by board reports and a motion that has been customary for very long. We're trying to do any residents that might choose this course. So I guess we'll start with the small local law number two. Oh, sorry. Trustee Chang is absent without the prior notice received.
Thank you, ma'am. It's your Incorporated Village of Floral Park, Notice of Public Hearing, Local Law Number Two of 2021. Please take notice that pursuant to the article eight of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park and the Municipal Home Law of the State of New York, as amended, the public hearing will be held in the Incorporated Village of Floral Park at Village Hall, One Flower Boulevard, Floral Park, on the tenth day of August 2021 at eight o'clock the evening of that day, to consider the enactment of a local law entitled "A Local Law Remaining Article Eight of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park to Prohibit Smoking, Baking, Oil Consumption of Tobacco or Cannabis Products on All Village-owned or leased Properties." This local law shall take effect immediately upon signing with Secretary of State, who was dated on July 30, 2021, and again on August 6, 2021. By order of Board of Trustees, Incorporated Village of Floral Park, New York, Susan E. Walsh, Village Clerk, and the notice has been published in the official paper of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park, New York, and posted according to law, and was sent to the Nassau County Planning Commission pursuant to Section 239-LMM of the General Municipal Law, determined to defer to the village to take action as deemed appropriate.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. I'd like to announce that the board that previously adopted the Declaration, meaning that the proposed local law has no significant impact upon the environment. Is there anyone on the board that would like to speak on something? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak with regards to this local law? English law? Anyone on Zoom? This is just one comment to this local law because we're presenting based on the recent changes in the New York State law that now allow legalization of cannabis, like marijuana, and prevent it from being smoked, you know, primarily not with parks, not just recreation centers, but a lot of parks that are enjoyed by our residents daily. If nothing else, they want to come over. I have a motion to adopt Local Law Number Two and close the public hearing.
So move.
Second. Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Combiner?
Aye.
Trustee Chiara?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
And ma'am, it's your turn.
Both aye. Thank you. Now, Local Law Number Three. Ms. Walsh, the three public notice.
Okay, go ahead. Okay. Legal Notice Incorporated Village of Floral Park, Notice of Public Hearing, Local Law Number Three of 2021. Please take notice that pursuant to quite one of the New York State Constitution, the provisions of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park and the Municipal Home Law of the State of New York, as amended, the public hearing will be held in the Incorporated Village of Floral Park at Village Hall, One Flower Boulevard, Floral Park, on the tenth day of August 2021, eight o'clock the evening of that day, to consider the enactment of a local law entitled "A Local Law Remaining the Adoption of Local Law Number One of 2021, and adopted pursuant to Cannabis Law Section 131, Optic Addic Licensing and Establishing Retail Cannabis Dispensaries and/or On-Site Cannabis Consumption Establishments within the Incorporated Village of Floral Park." This local law shall take effect immediately upon signing with Secretary of State, who stated in the paper to August 30, 2021, and again on August 6, 2021. By order of the Board of Trustees, Incorporated Village of Floral Park, New York, Susan E. Walsh, Village Clerk, and the notice has been published in the official paper of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park, New York, and posted according to law, and was sent to the Nassau County Planning Commission pursuant to Section 239-LMM of the General Municipal Law, determined to defer to the village to take action as deemed appropriate.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. I'd like to announce that the board that previously adopted and made the Declaration, meaning that the proposed local law has no significant impact upon the environment. I also would like to state that, as you may remember, back June 1st, we had the exact same law that we passed. Unfortunately, there was a technical defect in the way the notice was published, and to be 100% safe without our eyes across our teeth, we are presenting the local law again this evening, and due to the importance of this and not wanting to having stores of nothing could be able to sell cannabis or cannabis products within the village. Anyone with a vote on the board? I'd like also to enter into the record the transcript from the 6-121 hearing, which included comments by our Police Commissioner, Steve McAllister, and a resident of the local law. Is there anyone in the audience in Village Hall that would like to speak? Seeing none. Anyone on Zoom that would like to comment on this local law?
The floor is open.
Just for this local law?
Okay.
Seeing none. Is there anyone else on the board? No comments? If I could ask for my motion to adopt Local Law Number Three of 2021 and close the public hearing.
I'll hold that resolution.
Second. Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Combiner?
Aye.
Trustee Chiara?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
And ma'am, it's your turn.
Both aye. Thank you. That's it for our local laws this evening, and then we will move on to the other one, Ms. Walsh.
I would ask the board to approve the minutes of the regular appointment of the minutes held on July 13, 2021.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Most would carry.
I would ask the board to approve the schedule with accounts payable as follows: General Fund, monthly $204,395.82; Pool Fund, $97,344; Capital Fund, $576,581.78; for a grand total of $1,878,324.60.
I'll hold that resolution.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, pull the board.
Trustee Combiner?
Aye.
Trustee Chiara?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
And ma'am, it's your turn.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve and or ratify the use of public facilities as presented.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Most would carry.
I would ask the board to approve and or ratify the below listed block bodies, subjects to CDC and Department of Health and Food Affairs as presented.
I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Most would carry.
I would ask the board to authorize the tax subsidiary settlements of the properties listed below as presented.
I'll hold that resolution.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, pull the board.
Trustee Combiner?
Aye.
Trustee Chiara?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
And ma'am, it's your turn.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize a hiring of Allison Peggy, a full-time employee in the Corporate Public Works at the annual contractual rate of $38,356, subject to medical and alcohol, drug and alcohol clearances, and National Cannabis Services Commission to report. Also, the hiring of Deidre Stewart, as part-time school course in guard at the hourly contractual rate of $17.18, subject to medical and drug and alcohol clearances and National Cannabis Services Commission to report. And hiring of Torsten Listinsey as a new member of the Floral Park Volunteer Board, since having received possible clearance from the Nassau County Sheriff's Office, a background check in the Floral Park Police Department, and medical clearance from village physician. And to appoint Michael Derby to assume the duties and responsibilities as deputy tax collector, in addition to his current position as second village assessor, and an annual salary of $80,000 effectively immediately. And finally, approve the permanent status of Ryan Levy as a full-time laborer in Public Works Department since he successfully completed his six-month probationary period.
I'll hold that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, pull the board.
Trustee Combiner?
Aye.
Trustee Chiara?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
And ma'am, it's your turn.
Aye.
I would ask the board to surplus the 1991 round for Victoria within number two of AFP 71WXX 2018.
I'll hold that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Although they care about the FP within number seven of Floral Park.
It's one of my dual vehicles.
Ms. Walsh, would you pull the board?
Trustee Combiner?
Aye.
Trustee Chiara?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
And ma'am, it's your turn.
Aye.
I would ask the board to determine that specialty standard application of head panel engineering when you have a JTP gas tank of 130,000 jerk turn pipe is a type-two action as action as that terms defining secret and does not have significant infection in the environment.
I'll hold that resolution.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, pull the board.
Trustee Combiner?
Aye.
Trustee Chiara?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
And ma'am, it's your turn.
Aye.
I would ask the board to determine that specialty standard application of head panel engineering when you have a JTP gas tank of 130,000 jerk turn pipe is a type-two action as action as that terms defining secret and does not have significant infection in the environment.
I'll hold that resolution.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, pull the board.
Trustee Combiner?
Aye.
Trustee Chiara?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
And ma'am, it's your turn.
Aye.
I would ask the board to accept the letter of retirement from William Lord, Detective of the Floral Park Police Department, effective August 28, 2021, after 32 years of service.
I'll hold that resolution. Thank you, Detective Lord, for your service to the village.
I'll second and also second, Trustee Chiara's thanks to Detective Lord.
Any other discussion? Ms. Walsh, pull the board.
Trustee Combiner?
Aye.
Trustee Chiara?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
And ma'am, it's your turn.
And Bill makes for you a hard work dedication to our wonderful village and the way you were talking. Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize salary increases to present personnel, which request an average increase on all personnel lines of less than 2.5%, effective immediately as presented.
I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to thank the people that stood on us for their wonderful efforts for the past year, and I think for most of them, but I have opinion I know of a wonderful job and keep up the great work. And, you know, last year was not a normal year, but everyone came through and served our purpose tremendously. So, thank you, everyone. You pull the board, sorry.
Trustee Combiner?
Aye.
Trustee Chiara?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
And ma'am, it's your turn.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize payments of $3,699.50 to Twisted Metal Oil Collision plus the cost of car rent, offering repair of car damages to 2014 Hyundai, due to a multi-vehicle accident caused by one of our public works employees.
I'll hold that resolution.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Combiner?
Aye.
Trustee Chiara?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
And ma'am, it's your turn.
Now, that concludes our agenda, and I will ask for your reports. Detective Mary Combiner.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. For the Conservation Society, I'm starting with Centennial Gardens and all the absolutely amazing things that have taken place this summer that have made the gardens the outdoor space to see and be seen all over the park. On July 25th, the unveiling of a 48-foot by 15-foot mural designed and painted by artist Deliani Espinoza was unveiled for an enthusiastic audience of over 100 fans. This magnificent blue masterpiece, filled with colorful pictures of the unique array of flowers, plants, and herbs of a floral garden's home, is located on a slope directly underneath the main gate on the Floral Park Way. Thanks to our very talented artists, Deliani Espinoza, and Conservation Society volunteer Marina Moreno, who discovered Deliani for our gardens, what a lasting contribution. And speaking of contributions, we now have a fascinating labyrinth of lower gardens behind Christine's Strolling Gardens, designed and lovingly constructed by Deborah Rosetta, with the help from her other talented FPCS friends. Take a stroll to the labyrinth and be greeted by an invitation to walk the labyrinth slowly, find your center, and enjoy the peace. Over 100 Facebook likes and 2000 comments, such as what a great space of peace and tranquility demonstrate what a special place Deborah's labyrinth has become in only a short time. You can find the labyrinth surrounded by hundreds of bright colorful flowers on the strolling gardens, making for exquisite space to experience the best of nature. Deborah, many thanks for this unique gift to Floral Park. Our village gardening classes for children are thriving under the direction of Mrs. Laura Trentocost. The life of a sunflower has been a topic of interest for the children on our Garden Space Book page, too. And thanks to all the volunteers who roll up their sleeves to beautify the gardens at the month of the week out on August 7. If you just can't get to the garden to see it all in magnificent photos on the Floral Park Centennial Gardens Facebook page, hosted by FPCS as the only annual enough. The Recreation Department, it's hard to believe, but coming soon will be our son-in-law of all the World Basketball League Playoffs, always excited to watch and cheer on your favorite teams. Planning is downwind away for fall and an array of enjoyable programs for youth, adults, and seniors who come with it. Stay tuned. For our juniors and comrades in our businesses, our village government has worked with property owners of the fire damage businesses, United Properties and Morequins, and their contractors to expedite demolition process and move the debris on appropriately property. They are excited business ingredients amongst the owners' representatives, and the village are taking place to ensure follow-up. The villagers also consulting with exterminators, locals, and large commercial to engage in the appropriate road control given aside from demolitions. We thank all for their participation in this process. Residents will continue to receive updates regarding the status of the demolition company Marcus, but we're super kidding. Further information are building department numbers 326-6319. And to all, please continue to shop and dine local for an unforgettable experience here in Floral Park as Stewart Manor. And highly from our Department of the Works, good news from DPW. The village-wide LED completion project began on the north side with installations on Prop 5 Avenue, Jericho to the city line, and Headle East. The project will also include the replacement of 1,000 street fixtures and fixtures in total. The lights consume less energy, are more environmentally friendly, and last longer with reduced maintenance costs. The project is expected to end this fall with the final installation of the Centennial Gardens' auto path completed on the old Floral Park Way. For more information, see our FPDillage.org website. Thanks to our Go West Electric Company and DPW for the support of accomplishment.
Thank you. Trustee Chiara?
Thank you. Some good news in our Police Department. Alarm.org has once again announced that our village Floral Park is ranked number one on Long Island and number two in New York State as one of the safest communities. We have held this ranking for at least the last two years. They acknowledge that our village is a very peaceful and safe place to live. So true. Our Police Department does an excellent job keeping us, keeping our village safe, and we all thank you for doing so. Again, kudos to our Police Department and to our entire community as we work together so that we can all enjoy the safe and wonderful community. As mentioned early, after 32 years of loyal and dedicated service to our village, Detective William Lord, William Loria, has announced his retirement. Detective Loria started his career as a police officer in 1989. Police Officer Loria was recognized and promoted in February of 2001 to the distinguished rank of detective. He has served the rank of detective for over 20 years. Detective Loria, a lifetime resident of the village, is well-respected amongst his peers, who has willingly mentored his colleagues throughout his career. He is a relentless detective who has successfully investigated all types of criminal act. He always shows his compassionate concern to all who have mentioned the subject of crime, investigating each case as though it was the biggest of cases, even though they may have been of minor nature. The victims who complained always felt satisfied with how Detective Loria interacted with them. He did a great job, Billy. Billy, thank you for all the years of service to our village. We all wish you the best in your retirement. Please enjoy. For Building Department, the Building Department has once again handled a substantial amount of building permits insurance this summer season. They are up to date with the issuance of permits, and the turnaround time is very timely. During the summer, with the assistance of summer interns, the department is electronically storing building reports, not only to save space, but will now be able to pull up records much quicker. Thanks to all the summer interns for the assistance with the department in this project, it's very helpful.
Thank you, Trustee Chiara. Trustee Stewart?
Hi. For the pool, as we head into the final weeks of our pool season, I'm happy to share that the summer moved along swimmingly. Many sunny nights have led to fun days at Floral Park Pool. We were pleased to bring back family acts with themes such as Western Night, where good times were had by residents of all ages. We also extended the pool days on the really hot 93 days. We extended the four hours by an hour to give our residents a place to cool off. The season will unfortunately end on Sunday, September 6, with a final jump, and the traditional senior citizen swim on Tuesday, the 7. As we get ready to close the 2021 season, we are looking forward to making the 2022 season even better. So please keep an eye on village website and your email for information throughout the winter for the 2022 season. For the library, it was so great to have so many residents come out to the library lawn on the 15th of July to hear the Mike Barry Band. The evening was beautiful, the music was terrific. Another concert is scheduled for this Thursday, the 12th of August at 7:00. Bobby sings Noddy Darren. Bring a lawn chair and enjoy the show. So much excitement for the Floral Park Library, as it was voted Best Public Library at the Bethpage, federal accrediting its annual Best of Long Island contest. Huge congratulations to Ms. Pat Aaron and her staff for this well-deserved honor. Some of the highlights that brought this recognition to the library are the Library of Things, where residents may borrow items such as family games, a telescope, and a microscope. The children's teams and adult summer reading programs with raffle winners weekly, and yoga on the library along. Residents are encouraged to stop into the library and participate in some of these wonderful programs. On the final note, last Saturday, the 31st, I was so glad to be a part of the excitement of Floral Park Memorial as the Parents Booster Club, the parents of the music students, the band co-hosted the Greatest Game on Turf, they called it, which is what I hope, was the first annual wiffle ball tournament. There were brackets for all age groups. They were, they had over 30 wiffle ball fields set up on the grass. It was really, it was a great day. They were gratriles. They were, there was a home run derby as well, and it was really a great day to benefit the extracurricular program in the Floral Park Memorial.
Thank you, Trustee Stewart. I have Trustee Chang's report with regards to the dirt track. As we all know, 3TC and the LIRR are working on the interstate branch for the past few meetings. The good news is that we still have one more weekend of around the park work. The village, the village of the village that we possibly can to ensure the safety of our residents and to minimize the disruption of living near train tracks while heavy work is going on. And with regards, I'd like to thank Superintendent Gane, Trustee Chiara, Trustee Combiner, and Trustee Stewart, along with the Police Department for being very built for good with the last couple weekends, including some late nights. As a reminder, after this weekend, 3TC and the LIRR are set up to install supporting system equipment for the interstate branch. As of yet, we have not heard much about this work, but it probably deals with utility work, which should not be as disruptive and certainly will not be 24 hours a day. And I have a report that four of the utility poles that are up outside of the new retaining walls have been removed, and that work will continue. Finally, the installation of the Charles Street retaining sound walls should begin within the next two to three weeks. With regards to the fire department, as previously reported, the Fire Department and Nassau County Fire Marshal's Office did a drone flyover, flyover of the dirt track. The Floral Park Fire Department is reviewing the drone footage and will be working on response plans in the event of an emergency or disaster. The department is still actively recruiting new members. Zero's Pizza has agreed to attach the department recruitment flyer on the pizza box, since they'll be then steer Zero's for their assistance. Please consider joining the department. Come to headquarters, or call the chief's office, or speak to any of your neighbors who are members about the benefits, training, camaraderie, and feeling the satisfaction that comes from being a member of the department. And calls for a month in July, Rescue 72, rest of the department, 39, for a total of 111. As the rest of the board has reported, there's a lot of exciting things going on at Floral Park, whether it's the library being named Best Library in Nassau County. That's what happened. To our Police Department and the work they have done to ensure our safety of being named Second State City in New York State. I don't know if Mr. McAllister's not here this evening, but Lieutenant McCall, thank you for your work with all of the department's work for ensuring our village remains a leader, especially during the last year, which wasn't easy. And then also, Trustee Combiner, that you made a lot of predictions at Berry Gardens, and at the unveiling of the mural, it was great to see how many people came out. There were 100 people just came out from the unveiling, and it goes to show the work that this does and Berry Gardens and people are doing. And last thing, although, Ms. Walsh, list every organization that put in applications to be doing things, but it's great to see so many wonderful organizations in our village have plans for the upcoming, all season, whether it's the Williams Junior Club, the Hans Cavy Foundation, HRC, San Ludiger to Principal Church, they did a blood drive, the Floral Park Titans, the Floral Park Little League, the Floral Park Youth Council, the Udi, it's a Floral Park Little League again, the Northside Civic Association, the rest of civic associations along with the Wednesday Mama Club. An amazing list of organizations, that's just a few that have plans for the fall. And with that, ask for most of the few posters, push some of the little ones from residents' cars.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone in this hall that has a comment? I think you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. I know Phil Walter, I know 179 side retreat. How you doing? Better than mine? All good? I just found out that this is being all recorded, and actually, my neighbor sees this.
That's correct.
I mean, I believe it's a friend. And I believe that's friends when he tells the other neighbors. This is, I want everyone to know that this is not against him. He's a great, great, unbelievable guy.
I mean, you want to talk about it at a point in time.
It's against what he wants to do, right? He has this large tree in front of the house. He's obsessed with this tree, right? PSCU's there around four times, they find one of the new waters in. He was, he was afraid his children would get electrocuted if they touched the tree, right? And he went after the horizon, and the same thing there, too, right? The tree doesn't have one brown, bad limb or a brown leaf on it. It's not destroying the street, the curb, or the sidewalk, so I can't see why they have this big, beautiful tree. It's a big tree, no doubt about it. And then many more in Floral Park, the tree sitting, right? And I don't know why. I've been fighting for almost 12 years to get herbs put in, right? And that nowhere's with it. I asked, I had two trees moved down from the backyard, and I expect this tree, minimum, minimum $7,000, plus another 12, 15 hundred to get rid of the debris, right? Now, the village can find that kind of money to take a beautiful tree down. That's not doing any damage. How come they care for the money to repair the curb that is doing damage? And there's no damage.
I thought a couple things. Is the tree that you're speaking about on the village's property or is it on the resident's property?
The tree is on a.
The curb, I understand.
Yeah, the village's property.
So with regards to curbs, and it's been, Kevin, correct me, I mean, for most of the reconstruction roads, we've been putting curbs. When we redo a road, we typically, the past six or seven roads that we've done, have done a total reconstruction, which included the curbs. So at the next point, we would have wrote this.
I mean, if you.
I don't know how they road it, right? I know it's not one of the worst ones, that's for sure.
If you okay take this tree down, you're gonna open the can of worms, everyone who's was gonna say, "They might treat that thing out." You're fully made.
Kathy, on the trees?
I'm familiar with the tree.
The tree's not scheduled to come down, is it?
The tree may need to come down. That hasn't been totally decided yet. The tree is pushing up the road, pushing up the curb.
Oh, no, roadway, the roadway's not down so much above the curbs.
So sometimes the sidewalk is flat.
We can reevaluate this. I did speak to this resident. This resident also has small children that lives upstairs in the bedroom.
Yeah. So do mine.
I know. It's the largest tree on the block. We could reevaluate this, but I'll have an armer's look at it. But unfortunately, I do judge this tree to be dangerous to him and his family, and it is in the power lines, and it is.
It's a part of it. It's very little ones.
I can't.
So what we've done, what we typically do is we have someone evaluate the tree, right? And Kevin protested this. The last thing that we do is take down trees unless we have to. It's absolutely the last resort. And if we do take the trees down, we have a robust plan of replanting every spring before.
Oh, you eat a one of the tree.
Well, let's.
He'll get one.
He'll get one. So a couple of years ago, that was only years ago, we used to put letters in people's mailbox saying, "Get a tree if you don't want to fall." But probably about five years ago, we are planting trees. We have to keep up with it. We lost a lot during Sandy, we lost a lot during the hurricane last year, so we are aggressively planting trees. I think the budget's around twenty-five thousand dollars a year just by trees. My mother's probably close to two hundred trees get planted a year in the village.
All right, lots. Like I said, nothing against my neighbor, he's a brave guy, but I think the tree is perfectly okay.
Well, we have typically had an armer's look at it, made a determination. A professional.
You ever get any questions?
I have an armer's come in to look at it and give us a written report.
Because your man looked at it, later shook their head and said, "We're not gonna do that job."
Uh, what?
I was sitting right on that porch, what'd you do?
Because it's in the power lines, P S E G will come in and take the tree down if it needs to be removed.
Flor Park wouldn't have the equipment to take that tree down. That tree's a big around, right?
And it's high.
So, okay.
I just want to remind you, don't forget about my curb, not my curbs, sanitary curbs, all right? Whole side of them, Ron. And it's, the tree is an asset to the village, absolutely. The curb is high, you know, it's, all right, thank you for your time.
And Jerry.
My wife's really cute. You're talking to my wife.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience here in Village Hall that would like to make a comment? Anyone on Zoom? I've seen none. For those of you here, get a little safe here. Thank you for being able to stop. And as always, Billy's some just facts, but yeah, thank you.